Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Town of Gray's zoning board of appeals. Before I do the roll call, I would like to bring the attention to the citizens of Gray that over the Christmas holiday, or over the holiday season, I noticed a lot of events going on, read them in the paper, or saw them on a Facebook page. But I'd like to just remind the people of Gray that we have a community television station, which some of you are watching tonight. And if you go to the town's website, which is www.greymaine.org, on the homepage, there's an icon for Gray Community Television. If you are a nonprofit organization in the Town of Gray, or you live in the Town of Gray and belong to a nonprofit organization, you can submit to GCTV a announcement to be made. So like Church seventy Bean Supper, they could submit an announcement request, and the town, over its channel, would broadcast those events, times and dates. And we also, GCTV also provides an opportunity for the citizens to do their own programs, develop their own programs of interest. You know, if you're gardening, or model making, or whatever it might be, auto repair, you can do your own program, and Gray Community Television will help you produce that program if you need the help, or help you edit the program. And it's a way of providing your friends and neighbors with content about what's going on in their community, or things that might be a hobby, that are of interest to other people, but people just haven't reached out, for example. So just please be aware that that opportunity exists, so we can make better use of our community television station. That being said, roll call. Georgia Woodbury.
Present.
Derek Shirley.
Present.
Anthony Grabas.
Present.
Brad Fogg is present. Our first order of business is approval of the meeting, the minutes of December sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the, Georgia Woodbury, I move that we accept the minutes of the December sixth meeting, as recorded.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconding is by Anthony. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. We have three public hearings. The first one is Bentley Mayor Properties LLC is requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the signed ordinance to resurface one existing internally illuminated, non-conforming sign located on their property at two sixty-three Shaker Road, gray tax map zero one three, one zero one, zero one zero, zero zero zero, located in a rural residential agricultural zoning district. Is there a motion to open the meeting, the hearing? Shirley motions to open the hearing. Is there a second? Woodbury seconds. All those in favor? Unanimous. Who is here representing Bentley Mayor Properties LLC? Would you step up to the podium, please? State your name, and offer a go.
I'm the sole member of Bentley LLC. Let me see, get my notes here. So, I don't know if you have the write-up in front of you, but what we're trying to do, let's see if I can find the date from the existing sign. The two sixty-three Shaker Road had an existing commercial building there. I believe the last thing was Pizza Wings and Things, and that stopped, I believe, in two thousand fifteen. I purchased the property in two thousand eighteen. You can see the pictures I have here show the existing sign, both sides of it, one facing Circle K, and the other back facing George China Village. My intention would be to keep the existing sign, to not alter it in any way, except for to change the two lens panels. So I had flipped the Pizza Wings and Things panel, but it's still in there. But I'd like to swap that out with our mayor builders' logos. So I wouldn't alter the sign in any way, like footprint change, or height change, it's existing, just to repurpose the existing sign that's there. It does have, it's cemented into the ground, and it also has electricity run to it, which is under pavement, a conduit. So in order to remove and meet the twelve-foot setbacks, I would have to remove the existing sign, redo the new cement pad, as well as electrify the new sign, once it was there, which would be quite more of a process than I was intending. I was just intending to have Bailey signs come and swap the lens panels.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have, as you know from your application, one, two, three, four, five different criteria that we have to look at. And what we would do is we would make a motion on each piece of criteria and vote on that one. So would you please briefly tell us, I know you wrote a little thing in your application, but I think you've just now explained why you need the variance.
Sure. So the new sign ordinance requires a maximum height of twelve feet, and the current sign that's already there is sixteen foot two, so it's four foot two taller than today's standards. My intention was to just use the existing sign. I'm about to swap the panel, which is just like two lens panels, as I said, it's a pretty easy process. In order to meet the new sign ordinance, to drop the four feet, I could attempt to cut the sign, but that's really, doesn't seem like a practical idea. And in dealings with Bailey Sign, they don't really feel confident that I should go that route. So it would be rather not to replace the sign in its existing footprint. In order to replace that sign, I would be looking at the area of ten thousand dollars, which is not really, it's more than I'd like to spend. And I think that because the sign is there existing, it was permitted at the time of its installation, that I should be allowed to reuse the existing sign. Also, if you see in one of the back pictures, you can see the Circle K sign. It's two down, two properties down from mine. It's taller, and it's larger in size and footprint than my sign is, so.
Is that your sign that we can see beyond the Circle K, or is that China Gray sign?
Beyond the Circle K? Yeah, in the background, if you're looking at the Circle K sign, the one you can see in the background, that's like the white panel, that's mine.
Okay. Why, Mr. Mayor, did the town tell you you needed to apply for an ordinance if the sign was built in compliance with the ordinance?
So under my interpretation, that if you're swapping the panel, like the logo, so we're going from what was the Pizza Wings and Things to the Mayor Builders' logo, that it's like petitioning for a new sign. So when I went, dealt with Bailey Signs, they asked if I'd get a permit for it. And so when I'm trying to meet the criteria, I don't fit into the new ordinance, even though the sign is existing. I'm just trying to swap the logo in the existing sign.
Is there anything that Bailey's is gonna do, anything, Bailey's, Bailey Signs has worked with a couple signs in town here, so from an illumination standpoint, are they gonna be doing anything specific for you, different from other signs? Is it gonna be brighter?
No. So the plan is just, I don't know if I had submitted their quote, which I could get to you, it's just the logo panels. My responsibility is just to relight the sign, which is, I took the power away from the building, two sixty-three, I tore the front building down and redid it. So when I connect, I would only replace the bulbs if they're not working, but I'm under the impression that everything is gonna work once I re-electrify it.
Okay. Anybody else having questions?
I have a question, because this was in the packet. Is this one, is this one not concerned, I see, because it's just...
Oh, that's a good one.
No, I know, but I'm saying, like, for a sign, this was in the same packet, no?
No. I think they're looking at the size of the sign on the building, and the size of the sign on the...
Gotcha. There's your...
Is within the square foot requirement.
Just for clarification, when I submitted for the permitting, I submitted for two, one for the road signs, but also to put a sign on the building. I met all requirements for the current sign ordinance, except for the height of the existing sign. So that's the only...
Okay. I would make the motion that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, and not to the general condition of the neighborhood.
Point border.
Yes.
Are you going to allow public comment? And public hearing?
Yes, Dan, I am sorry, you are correct. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this issue? Mr. McGuire.
My name's Dan McGuire, I live at seventy Johnson Road here in Gray. Truth in advertising, I am a town councillor, but I have no authority here in the ZVA meeting, but I do like to put everything up front on the table. I understand why Mr. Mayor would be interested in the height variance. He did portray the worst-case scenario, as far as addressing the height of the sign was concerned, so it's really unknown whether it would cost that much money or not. But, and I'm sure it's a simple mistake, he claimed that he met all the other ordinances, or all the other parts of the sign ordinance for illuminated sign, and he was mistaken there. Four oh six, hang on for a second, four oh six point seven point four illuminated sign standards talks that only thirty percent of the sign can be white or light colored. And if you look at the sign on packet, page ten of your packet, the sign that he's proposed is got a bright white background with just his logo and lettering. I would also ask that the rest of the illuminated sign ordinance be required of Mr. Mayor, if you do decide to give him a variance on the height, which includes A through E in section four oh six point seven, point six, point four, pardon me. I think that's pretty much it that I have to say.
Mr. McGuire, is your primary concern the background color of the sign?
It's the, it's the application of the rest of the ordinance, as far as illumination is concerned, which involves brightness, time of day requirements for the brightness. Like I said, the amount of white background in the sign, and I just, again, I don't think it was anything intentional, let me stretch the imagination, but I just think it was inaccurate for him to say he met the rest of the ordinance with regards to the sign. You're gonna go into your ordinance book, it's, it's page twenty-five, I think, is four oh six point seven in the street ordinance. Also, just FYI from experience, if you don't speak into your microphones really well, if you sit back, it's very hard for people to hear on the recording. Those microphones aren't very good, so you really kind of have to lean into them. So again, you know, I'm not talking, I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the height, I certainly understand that. But where he did say he met the rest of the ordinance, I would just ask the board to make sure that the only exemption, if you give one, is for the height, and not the other criteria.
Yeah, if I could add something, Dan?
Step to the podium, please, you know that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm Sammy Munson, the code officer. I just wanted to follow up with Dan's concern, because when Sam came to me, and we've worked on other stuff, we knew that the height was the immediate issue. So we did not look at anything else other than that, because that was basically a stopping point. So if the background and the internal illumination and the thirty percent of the whiteness, I can work with him on those areas that he honestly did not know, because we didn't even go any further with his review when he came and met with me. Because basically, unless he could do this, there was no point in doing anything else. So I could work with him, and we can change, the design of his sign is, he's not gonna have it done until he knows if he can do this or not anyways.
Okay, because that would be an enforcement issue down the road, because what we would be doing, if we did it, would be to grant a height variance only.
Correct.
So everything else would have to be in compliance with the sign ordinance as it's prepared.
Yep, and I can work with GCT.
Okay.
We've been working closely on that project, even be more than willing to do that, so.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none? I would make the motion that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, and not to the general condition of the neighborhood. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
The reason I say that is that the sign has been there, at least for the thirty-six years I've been in town, and probably before that, when the original owners of the property first built the original building, that sold whatever it was, they sold, whether it be the tattoo parlor, or the dugout ice cream place, or pizza time, or, and I don't know what was there before the...
Wings and Things?
Pardon?
Before the Wings and Things?
Yeah, before Wings and Things, I mean, it was, it's been there a long time.
Restaurant, barber shop, you name it.
Okay.
The lawn, everything.
And the sign has been there, I think, since day one.
Few changes there. There was one other sign, but I can't talk over one.
That's okay. But I think the uniqueness is that, I mean, the property has changed hands so many times. One of the proprietors obviously built a new sign, gave it a good concrete, solid footing. It is surrounded, in fact, by asphalt. I drove down and looked at it, just, and I will say that, I drove, I drive by it almost every day, and looked at it. And not that the general condition of the property is good, so I see no reason why that couldn't be considered. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
All those in favor of that motion is unanimous. I would make the motion that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of budding properties. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Again, I guess I come to that train of thought, because the sign has been there, you know, forever, and it's, it's almost like it's part of the neighborhood. You drive down the street, oh, there's the pizza sign, or you know, there's the dugout sign, or whatever it might be. And I think people going to the ski areas the last forty-five years or so have seen that sign there lit up or not lit up, and I don't think the neighborhood is being negatively impacted in any way, shape, form, or manner by that sign staying at its current height. Does anybody else have anything to offer on that? Seeing none. Is there, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Any bells?
Derek Shirley. The practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or prior owner.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I'll second the motion.
Are there any comments? I think the practical difficulty really isn't the, can't be associated with the current owner or the previous owner. The difficulty is that the town made an ordinance, or renewed an ordinance, that really gave no consideration to the possibility that an existing building at the time, or company at the time, might be sold, and they might have to change the logo on the business. And if the sign was in compliance at the time with the previous owner, just because it's sold, I don't, not sure that the new property owner should be punished as a result of that. So I don't think that the owners had any control over that. That's my opinion. Anybody else?
I agree with that opinion.
I agree.
All those in favor of the motion is unanimous.
Derek Shirley. No other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. And I think we kind of explained that a little bit.
Fogg seconds. Sorry, that's okay.
I think it's one of those things where it's, it goes down to the term feasible. I don't think it really makes sense to, you know, chop it down just to rebuild it, to make it a couple feet in line with something that was essentially grandfathered in, among your control, so I don't think you should be in charge of shrinking it now, since it's been in existence since longer than I've been alive, it sounds like.
Anybody else?
No.
All those in favor of the motion? I would make the motion that the granting of the variance will not unnecessarily adversely affect the natural environment.
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Does anybody have any reason or cause to believe that the natural environment's gonna be adversely affected by allowing the existing sign to stay in place?
No.
Anybody?
No.
All those in favor? I would make the motion that the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline areas as described in Title thirty-eight, Section four three five. Is there a second?
Derek Shirley, seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I would make the motion that Bentley Mayor Properties LLC be granted a practical difficulty variance from the established, standards established in the sign ordinance to reface one existing internally illuminated, non-conforming sign, its height, located on the property at two sixty-three Shaker Road, gray, tax map zero one three, one zero one, zero one zero, zero zero zero, located in the rural residential agricultural zoning district, emphasizing that the variance is for the height, that all of the sign ordinance standards must be there. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Any discussion? Any, Marty's right, do we do have to do comments from the public? I don't think so, but. All those in favor? Unanimous. Mr. Mayor, sometime in the next week, an ordinance or a decision will be typed up by the Code Enforcement Office to be signed and given to you, but sometime, I think, before next Thursday, considering Monday is a holiday. So it will be Thursday or Friday next week, because of that Monday holiday. Okay, thank you very much. Our second order of business is to open a public hearing on Robert and Joanna Ritchie, who are requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance, to reduce a fifty-foot required front setback down to thirty-three feet in order to install a fifty-foot right-of-way accessing the rear of their parcel located on their property at one thirty-four Long Hill Road, tax map zero six four, zero four two, zero zero four, zero zero zero, in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. Is there somebody here to represent Robert and Joanna Ritchie?
Yes.
Step right up to the podium, sir, and surrender your name.
My name is Robert Ritchie. I live at one thirty-four Long Hill Road. And I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horse by asking for this, but my intention is to build another house. And where I built this house, it was brought to my attention by Code Enforcement when I was getting the foundation inspected, that it wasn't far enough from the property line to allow a right-of-way to get to the back of the property. And his suggestion was to apply for front setback variance.
Okay.
Rather than, I asked, should I tear the foundation down and restart? Because I got a lot of property here that, you know, I would like to be in access. So do I bite the bullet on the foundation? He said not to worry about it, just apply for the setback variance.
Favorite last words, do not worry, right?
There were a couple of sleepless nights.
Okay, does anybody have any questions with Mr. Ritchie?
No, I, I don't, I don't, don't believe so.
Not to let you off the hook, Mr. Ritchie. But what's the unique circumstance that would warrant the...
Well, as a break, I don't think there is. But when I set, when I break off, I'm gonna sell this house that I built, and to get past that house with a fifty-foot right-of-way, it's gonna, the house that I built isn't fifty feet from that fifty-foot right-of-way. So he, I'm not sure this is what I'm supposed to be doing, but he told... right-of-way. So he, I'm not sure this is what I'm supposed to be doing, but he told me this is what I should do.
If you wanna build another house.
If I wanna build another house, yes.
Otherwise, if the variance wouldn't, wasn't granted, you couldn't build another house, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Because there wouldn't be an easement or a right-of-way.
Correct.
Is the second lot large enough to build another house?
Yeah, ninety-three acres.
Have you started to build on the current foundation?
Yes, I've, I've been in the house for a year and a half.
Okay.
And it's coming up on my two years where, you know, I might think about selling it and I just wanna get ahead of it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Any comments from the public?
Just me.
Have a stand-up right there and. The people in town wanna know what people are asking, that's all.
Floyd Wing, uh, Gray Maine, what else you wanna know? Uh, and I'm his neighbor, so, next door. Uh, the Maine right-of-way, you're not screwing with anything yet?
No.
That's all I got.
Now, the Maine right-of-way is, is that?
The Maine right-of-way coming in.
Is that piece that exists now between?
Borders both our bo, our, our land.
Okay.
Okay? And as long as he, uh, isn't doing anything there, that's, that's the only thing I care about.
Okay, Mr. Ritchie, who's on the other side? This, this Floyd Wing property, your property, who's on the other side?
There's a, there's a few people on the other side.
That's Doughty Daisy Lane.
It's off Daisy Lane.
And whoever they are, we, I don't, I don't.
Okay, so I have a, a clear understanding. On your map, this piece of property at the top.
Yes.
Is?
There's multiple different owners on that side.
Multiple, okay, so there's multiple lots on that side?
Yes, you can see a real Floyd Wing property.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
And none of them have property or?
None of them will be affected.
Okay.
The only house that would ever be affected is the house that I'm living in, cause it wouldn't have fifty feet setback.
Okay.
From the right-of-way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wing. Mr. McGuire, looks like you have something there.
Uh, yes, Dan McGuire, Johnson Road, Gray. Um, if you're only gonna build one house or two houses, I can't remember the ordinance, chapter and verse, but you don't need a fifty-foot right-of-way. But if you wanna build a dozen houses on your ninety-three acres, you do need a fifty-foot right-of-way. So by granting a fifty-foot right-of-way, what you're doing is you're allowing that property in the future to be developed more extensively than, than just one more house. If you just wanna put one more house back there, you don't need a variance. The ordinance would let you do that. But I can't cite you the exact ordinance, cause I believe you're only, you only need a thirty-foot right-of-way if you only wanna put one or two houses in a backlot.
So Dan, do I hear you saying, I'm gonna interpret your thoughts, that unless the applicant has plans to develop the property beyond more than one house?
Well, no, I'm not saying the applicant does. He may not have any plans at all, but I'm just saying if you grant a fifty-foot right-of-way.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you out though, that.
Yes.
Unless, and, and if, if, if there are no potential plans to develop more than one house back there, that the fifty feet isn't needed, and if he wants to do, like, one or more, he would have to go to the planning board anyway, is that correct?
Well, you, you, over time, you wouldn't have to, no. You can, you can break a piece of property up every five years without having, without hitting subdivision. And I'm not saying that the applicant has any desire to do that, but in your last case, you were talking about the, you know, previous owners and future owners, and so there is a, you know, there is a future out there. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, I'm just saying you should be aware that if you grant a fifty-foot right-of-way, that ninety-three acre parcels could be turned into subdivision. So that's, that was, that was my own comment.
Thank you. Certainly raises a good question, doesn't it, Mr. Ritchie? I wanna take time to look that up if I can find it. Kami, where would I find that in the ordinance?
Uh, I'd have to have.
Is this it? I don't see footages on it though. I don't see dimensions.
I wonder, the, the signs of a road.
I don't see what says any dimensions.
Concerned about seeing thousand homes and fifteen houses. On page fifty-one, I'm looking.
Fifty-one?
Yep.
Well, that's the section I don't have. I don't have a complete book.
You have page fifty-one?
Nope. We'll from page forty-eight to one-oh-two.
Yep. Okay, in, in the, um, ordinance, I'll make sure that I totally understand this. Section two. Under Chapter four-oh-two zoning ordinance, Section two, I'm looking at four-oh-two-point-seven-point-five, four-oh-two-point-seven-point-five, which addresses backlots used for single-family purposes shall be permitted provided they meet the following standards. A, access requirements of fifty-foot wide access shall be provided for backlots. Said access shall be owned either in fee or by permanent, permanent easement and maintained by the backlot users. Record of said access shall be recorded as part of the deed of each backlot and shall be filed with the county register of deeds. The accessway to the street shall conform with the standards of the subdivision ordinance and shall be approved by the code enforcement officer. The issue of a building permit for a single-family dwelling on a backlot shall in no way be construed to imply the acceptance of any accessway for the purpose of maintenance, improvements, or snow removal by the town of Gray. And the creation of a subdivision requires compliance with the provisions of the Gray subdivision ordinance. Period. And that's letter A. So, it looked in, if I read that correctly, that, that second lot, back lot that he's gonna break off still requires a fifty-foot, uh, access right-of-way. So that being said, I think we've resolved that, that part of it. So did we decide what the unique aspect of this, this was, circumstance of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood were? I mean, I wanna be sold on that.
I mean, even if you're not sold on it, jump to another one, I don't think you're gonna have what you want either.
Anybody? Anybody? Help me out here?
No.
Cause let's do what we usually do, we should just, let's skip that one and see if B fits.
Okay.
C, you know, you're like, that's what, I feel like we.
Okay, uh, letter B. Is there a motion?
I move that, that, Georgia Woodbury, I move that the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of a budding properties.
I would second that. Any comments?
I can agree with that one.
Yeah, I think that if the variance were to be granted, I don't think the neighborhood's gonna change, uh, on Long Hill Road. And we have comments from at least one of Butter.
Right.
That's not opposed to it. And it's certainly not adding any more housing on the long road, Long Hill Road frontage. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Letter C.
Uh, letter C, Derek Shirley, the practical va- variance is not the result action taken by the petitioner or prior owner.
I will second that for discussion. Is there any discussion?
It actually was.
And he states it.
That's a tough one to get over because the problem was, in fact, major contribution to the problem was the placement of the foundation. And probably not moved at the time it was, the discovery was made. And that certainly is the responsibility of the property owner and not any of Butters. Any other comments? Mr. Ritchie?
I guess in my defense, I clearly asked Scott when he was there doing it whether I should tear it down and redo it.
Who's Scott?
Scott was code enforcement here. I don't remember his last name.
Devore.
Scott Devore. And he goes, well, you're not putting a subdivision back there, are you? I go, no, but I do plan on building another house in here. I go, what do I do? Do I tear it down? Do I bite the bullet? He goes, well, if you're not putting a subdivision, then just go get a front setback variance. He goes, I've never seen him make anyone tear anything down.
Wish that conversation took place before breaking ground, huh?
Okay, there's not, there's no way to check with Scott, so.
The practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or the prior owner. Sounds like it was.
Code enforcement.
It, code enforcement. He was told to move forward with it. I'm putting myself in the iss- issues.
Yeah, uh, well, no, I, I hear, I hear everything you're saying, cause this is not the first issue that has arisen in the last six or seven years over change of code enforcement officers. I mean, we had to have one come back and actually testify by phone that a mistake was made.
A former code enfor, code enforcement.
Yep. I'm willing to accept the word of the petitioner that that's exactly what happened. All those, all the, considering, and we're gonna take your word for that, that you move forward only at the word of the then, uh, code enforcement officer. Has there been any agreeable to that?
When he sells the properties.
Who sells the property?
When, when Mr. Ritchie decides to sell the properties, let's say it's five years from now. The circumstances with the setback being thirty-three feet, is that gonna be something that's gonna be communicated properly to the?
That's right, cause he's already talking about selling this house.
Well, if he sells the current house, and so, let's say we grant the fifty-foot variance.
So there's a foundation, there's a foundation right next to this one. Right next to this house that, that you have.
No, no, no. Not yet.
But there's a house there now. A house was built.
Yep.
On the, on the map.
Yep.
And between the house and the property line, it's only thirty-three feet.
Because of the six-foot deck.
Well, from the front of the deck to the property line, that, that variance, the right-of-way would go through is eighty-three feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right here.
So from that property line, bring it in fifty feet for the right-of-way, that only leaves thirty-three feet from that right-of-way to the front of the deck.
Okay.
So it's twenty-foot for the road. And thirteen feet into the front of the deck.
Well, we have thirty-three feet to the front of the deck, front of the house, cause there's eighty-three feet there now.
Yep.
From the right-of-way.
From the right-of, from the property line to his house, right?
From this line.
I'm looking at this map.
Okay.
He's got, actually, he's got eighty-nine feet allocated there, so there's a six-foot deck, so there's eighty-three feet from here to here. He's asking for fifty-foot right-of-way, which would give him thirty-three feet from here to the edge of any proposed continuation of the driveway.
Correct. Right.
Eighty-nine feet here to here, six feet, so it's thirty, it's eighty-three feet from here to here. Right, eighty-nine feet here to here, six feet, so it's thirty, it's eighty-three feet from here to here.
Yep.
He wants a fifty-foot right-of-way, so that would make this, and this line would be thirty-three feet to the front deck. The distance from the edge of the dr- the edge, edge of the driveway to the front deck's thirty-three feet. So it'd be like a front lawn, a thirty-three feet line.
Okay. In my eyes, I was, I was interpreting that as it would be thirteen. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Even more, even more front yard.
And Scott's up, oops, and Scott's up.
If I do break that property off, wouldn't that be in the deed for that property, that it would only be thirty-three feet, so wouldn't they automatically know?
Well, if, if you break the property off, i- uh, I mean, if we grant the variance.
Correct.
If you sell the property, that would be part of the deed. Informing the, the new or any possible new homeowner that he's only got a thirty-three-foot front yard.
Yep.
And he's gonna have traffic, he or she or whomever is gonna have traffic going by their home.
Cause if there's only one house out in the back lot, won't be a lot of traffic.
Proposed one house.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got a plan in mind. Uh, all those in favor of letter C?
I second.
Second, okay. Unanimous. Letter D, no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner.
Only tearing down what he calls.
I second.
What are your other options, tearing down?
Basically.
I made the motion that-
Or I have to go to Floyd Wing and drive by his property off of him, so I can put a road below my house.
Is there anything on Floyd Wing's property between the, your driveway and?
And Long Hill Road?
No, no, it's all trees.
How far is it from your driveway to the, along the Floyd Wing property for the next, to the next property, or to the next structure?
Floyd owns, it's like nine acres, right up Long Hill he owns. And my right-of-way that goes in on the end of his, it's three hundred feet long. Does that answer your question? So his property's three hundred feet deep off of Long Hill Road, but it's nine acres wide on Long Hill. That make sense?
It does. I mean, the only other possible alternative would be Mr. Wing, you know, selling Mr. Ritchie a right-of-way or an easement across his property that would meet all the requirements to access the lot immediately behind Mr. Ritchie's current house.
But Mr. Wing has already said he doesn't want his property touched in any way.
Affected in any way, okay.
I mean, that's.
So that's not, that's not feasible.
Sounds like it's no feasible way.
That would incur a lot of problems, cause then I gotta move my well, my septic, my driveway. And there's already a driveway that goes all the way up to the top of my property anyway.
An old road, is it?
Yeah, yeah, the previous, well, a couple owners previous, and logged it.
Where, is your, where's your well and septic, is it up behind the house?
It's close to the Floyd Wing property, between my driveway and the property line.
Okay, my motion was the practical diff- uh, that no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. And Anthony, did you second that? Who seconded that?
I might have actually, yeah. Derek Shirley.
All those in in favor that there's no feasible alternative? All those opposed?
Yep.
It's unanimous. I would move that the granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment.
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Any comments?
Now buying a little swatch of Floyd Wing's property and cutting down trees to put into the driveway, that's gonna change things, right?
That would change the natural appearance of the neighborhood, that's correct.
Just cut all the trees down in gray and turn it into a big parking lot.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. I would make the motion that the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline areas as described in title thirty-eight, section four thirty-five, we know it's already a rural residential, so. There a second?
I, uh, Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now back to letter A. The need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of, excuse me, of the neighborhood.
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
I will throw some thoughts and at the time the original structure was built, it was all permitted and approved and inspected. What makes it now unique after testimony? If we are to accept the fact that the then code enforcement officer said the foundation was set in such a way that it didn't have to be removed and that all the applicant had to do was ask for a variance to the front setback to build an additional structure. I think in my, my opinion, that becomes a unique circumstance. I mean, it's almost like uncontrollable. And I think it would be burdensome to the town to try to locate the previous code enforcement officer and structure some type of meeting where that person could give testimony to either verify or deny that. What do you folks think?
I, I agree that it would be a burden on the town.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I think, uh, that is the unique circumstance. I think it's one of those things where, I mean, we're talking about a couple feet. I don't think it's worth the town's effort and time to go on a goose chase over a couple feet. But it's one of those things that I'm glad we talked through it to understand what makes, what, how we can make this work, cause it doesn't seem like you know, the end of the world. But I do have concerns about once selling the property, but I think that will be hammered out.
And Tammy, we mean, we need to have it made known in the notes of the decision. Our concerns are reasoning being the previous code enforcement officer or a previous code enforcement officer telling the applicant that he could build the foundation there and simply apply for a variance. I think that needs, that's, that's really a very unique and important issue.
Point four.
Yes.
You have no proof that that's true, no, that's not so. You have absolutely no proof that that's true. So you're gonna write that into your, into your ruling, but no proof?
I, I think that it's a concern. It's a concern. Which makes the circumstances of the property now unique. Did it actually happen, Dan? You're right, we have absolutely no absolute truth, other than the applicant's testimony, that he was told. Which would make that firsthand information, it's not hearsay from the applicant, although it's hearsay to us, I guess, but we're not a court of law. It's a civil consideration and I, I, I think it's important to note that testimony by the applicant says that he was granted a permit to build the foundation where it was built. And we'll leave it at that. Did we vote?
Not yet.
All those in favor of the motion? Now, let me think aloud here. I would make the motion that Robert and Joanna Ritchie be granted a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in zoning ordinance to reduce a fifty-foot required setback, front setback down to thirty-three feet in order to install a fifty-foot right-of-way assessing the rear of their property located on their property at one thirty-four Long Hill Road. Gray tax map zero six four zero four two zero zero four, gas zero zero zero. In a rural residential and agricultural zoning district for the purpose of building up to one additional housing unit.
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Is there discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
The extension of the right-of-ways variance is granted for the purposes of, you're building, build one additional housing unit. Do you wanna take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna take a five-minute break before we start the next hearing. Welcome back from our short recess to the zoning board of appeals meeting. Our next order of business is SRB Property Holdings Incorporated, SBR Property Holdings LLC, I want to make sure we get that right. It's requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a fifty-foot setback requirement down to fifteen feet, to reduce a required fifty-foot rear setback down to fifteen feet, to reduce a required twenty-five-foot side setback down to fifteen feet, and to reduce a required ten-foot side setback for a driveway down to five feet located on their property at North Raymond Road, great tax map zero one three one zero one zero zero seven zero 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 in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. Is there somebody here to represent SRB Property Holdings? Would you step up to the microphone, please?
Um, I'm Shane from SRB Properties.
What's your last name, Shane?
Brady.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to apply for a variance, get a driveway entrance. I bought the lot on the corner of four North Raymond Road, and it doesn't have an entrance off twenty-six or off North Raymond Road.
That's the lot where the old gray...
Yeah, it's the dry mill store.
Dry mill store. And, and what else was on the lot?
Uh, there was another building, but I'm not sure what the building was.
Do you know the location of the previous building?
Yeah, it was right on the very corner.
The previous building was on the very corner, or was it?
Uh, well, it's technically in the intersection now because it stayed tore down and moved the whole road over.
Yeah. So you're asking us today only for a variance for the driveway?
Uh, driveway and the setbacks, which I'm not exactly sure with the new building. I'd like to put a single-family home there, and I'm not exactly sure where it's gonna fit or where to put it on the lot. Um, and instead of coming back here twice, I just figured I'd ask for all of it upfront. And usually I have Wayne Wood do the surveys, so he'll tell me like the best spot to put the house on the lot.
So you haven't established where the house is gonna go on the lot yet?
Correct. I'd like to put it further back, um, towards the back corner, just to keep it off the intersection.
I have to be honest with you, I wish I knew where the house is gonna be sitting. Just the distances from the house to the driveway, the house to... I know you're asking for a setback, for a front-side, back-setback for the house location, but we don't know where the house is gonna be located. We don't know where the septic field is gonna be located. We, we don't know any of that stuff.
Right. Yeah. The septic would be closer to the road.
Yeah, but is it gonna be far enough off the road?
Right.
I mean, the size, the size of the septic you might need for a single-family house, two or three bedrooms, you know, will it be?
Uh, if you use the new Algen beds, if you use the new Algen beds, it shrinks down the footprint.
So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I would need an engineer to uh, describe that, and I guess that I would want a better survey, uh, to that. I mean, very honestly.
Yep.
You've seen those Elgens getting delivered around town here. I see them all the time.
I haven't.
Yeah.
On the flatbeds, they're like...
Yeah, they're...
Or is that, is that what I call like a, a, a container system?
Yeah.
Mini-containers?
Yeah, yeah, they're basically, they're smaller than the back of a pickup truck.
Okay, I know what you're talking about now.
They take up like no footprint compared to the old stone and pipe beds.
Really, so if you had a three-bedroom, that has to be big enough for six people? Because I remember that one.
Well, I would want an engineer, I mean, very honestly, I mean, not that we can't address it, but personally, I would like to see the location of the house on the lot, the location of the septic field. I'd wanna know where the utilities are gonna come in from, if it could be over-ground, underground. I'd wanna know, you know, the previous surface of any potential driveway.
Right.
Uh, is it too much, is it not enough?
Yeah, I had a...
Very honestly, you know, sh... I don't wanna be negative because I could change my mind really quick, one way or the other, but I'd wanna know the tr... very honestly, I wanna know the traffic count going around the corner now.
Right.
I mean, because the last thing that happened to the old dry mill store is DOT put up, even while they were open, no parking signs all around it.
Right, yeah, because people...
To be able to accommodate traffic that was going around that corner.
Yeah, yeah, and then they had to put the rocks up because people are cutting across the back lawn to skip the light.
So, these, these are all concerns I have, I mean, I don't wanna be negative.
Right.
But, I mean, especially where across the street, there's a, there's a brand-new, um, island.
Yeah.
A brand, a brand-new entrance to, uh, the store, and there's another driveway within, what, fifty feet of your potential driveway?
Uh, it's pretty much right next to it, um, because the driveway is right on the property line. Being a single-family house, I don't think that it would impact the intersection much because I'd less than ten trips a day.
I, I'm, I'm not saying yes or no, but I, I think there are a lot of unanswered questions here about, you know, where the house is gonna be located.
Right.
You know, the size of the driveway, um, I mean, I al- also would like Mr. Tim's, does it, is that how you pronounce his last name, Tim's? Times? Public Works?
Oh, uh...
Yeah.
What is it?
It's Tim Estes.
I think I would want Mr. Estes here also to testify, other than saying it's not a suitable location, and I'd like to see what he means by not a suitable location, or why it's not a suitable location, and, you know, give more input.
Well, there's a couple of...
From my understanding, it's because of the storm drain, so he doesn't want access right...
Well, good, good point, though, I mean...
Yeah.
And there's two, um, markers, one on either side of that storm drain. Is that where the driveway is supposed to be going?
Yeah, that was, uh, my proposed driveway, because it gets it the furthest away from the intersection, and it also gets it what I consider to be safer.
Let me take it, this is the next property line here, this is the other next driveway.
Would you folks want to move forward, or, or, I'd like to table it, to be honest with you.
I would, too. We need more, more information.
I mean, I don't wanna slow, slow any projects down, but I'd really like to table this until next month, until you can come back with more complete drawings on house location and...
Yeah, if I may, um, Tammy Munson, current enforcement officer, you, you could look at this as a two-part variance, because obviously, right now, he doesn't have any access to this lot. So if he, he needs access in order to put a house on it. So you could look at the driveway issue, if you wanna move forward with that, and then table the variance and have him come back, because if the driveway issue is, is denied, then he can't put the house, he can't do anything. So you could do that piece of it first, or you could table the whole thing. It's just a suggestion, however you wanna handle it. But in discussion, I would do that piece of it first, because in order to do that, then that is, everything else is hinging upon that entrance permit. So those are my thoughts.
I'd still like to hear from you.
Basically, basically, because they need to know where the entrance is to build properly, to show us everything else, is that what I understand?
And, uh, I'm all right with working with Tim, and if he wants to change it to a different spot on the lot, um...
Well, if you're willing to work with Tim and change the, the locate, the potential location of the driveway, then you probably ought to have that before you came here, or sharing the driveway with a neighbor. I don't know if that's a possibility either.
So I've tried to buy easements from both of the neighbors, and one of the neighbors told me I could buy the whole house or nothing.
Is that the barn, the one of the barn, the way it goes?
Yeah.
Is that this conversation right here?
Yeah. And then I talked to the other neighbor with the white house behind it, and he doesn't have any interest in selling a variance, or selling an easement across it. And then, uh, that's when I came across a state statute saying that you're not allowed to land-lock a piece of land.
But, but it's not landlocked?
Uh, without an entrance to it, it is.
Well, that's true.
Okay, it's a quarter of an acre.
Cut in half from that intersection. That lot could've cut in half.
Yeah, I also wanna add that I believe that those text messages were from Joe, and that property has already been sold.
Right.
And so there's a new owner who, and I know...
Of, of, of the place next door, the red barn and the white barn.
So whatever that message was that he's referring to, I didn't know if you were aware of that or not, that Joe offered to sell him the whole piece, and, and the message he gives him a price, he, he's already sold it. It's no longer an option for him, just, just for the record, so...
Yeah, and I haven't made contact with the new owners, which they bought it a month ago.
A month ago, two months ago.
Well, for him to start doing stuff on there. Where's that driveway for that white barn? Is it, the driveway?
Yeah, if you look at... One of the pictures, I chose both of them. Yeah, if you look at the second to the left picture, uh, that's almost standing out where the state is.
Yeah, this one here.
Oh, that's the driveway of the black, the white house, though?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the picture you just held up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the driveway of the White House, but I thought we had a, I thought we saw a picture that had a longer view to the two posts.
It's this one.
Yeah, so Tim, um...
Well, then, there's one from Tim.
Also did some, a couple of pictures with his.
That's from Tim.
Tammy, do you know right off the top of your head how far a driveway can, you know, be from another driveway?
I think they just had the property line setback, not...
Yes, I think it's the top one.
Is there a curb cutout right there?
Well, that's, that's a driveway for the house next door.
Yes, there's information you should be in your packet, just so that you understand. A private driveway needs to be at least ten feet off from the property line. It doesn't say distance to another driveway. But the issue with this as well is that a driveway should be located not less than fifty feet from the tangent point of the travelway radius at any intersection. This property, the entire property, is the tangent point of the, um, travelway edge, at the radius. So he would have to be on either side beyond, you know, say on the North Raymond Road, he'd be on, be on, beyond the, the farmhouse is where the driveway would be in order to meet this. So there's, there's that issue that, um, is the reason why this initially occurred, and why it didn't go to Tim Estes, is because he can't meet the very first thing, which is the fifty-foot off the, um, the point, yeah, the point of tran- tangent of the travel right-of-way.
Wow.
And it looks like the best place to put that driveway for you, Shane, that storm drain's right there.
Right. And that's why, um, I'm wanting to work with Tim, because we could pitch the driveway back onto the property so that the water doesn't go...
Pitch it towards the intersection?
Uh, no, back onto my own property.
Backed, okay.
Uh, towards the back of the lot. Or leave a lip on the front, or put a swale, so that it doesn't flood water into the...
Well, before we go any further, um, let's open a public hearing on this issue, so I declare that the public hearing for the SBR Property Holdings LLC is now open and open for public comment.
So, and I just wanna make one more point, I just want the board to, to understand that, so if we're just looking at the driveway issue, there are two things that he's asking for, is he's asking for relief from the fifty-foot distance of the radius issue, and then he's also asking for a reduced side setback of five feet, I believe.
Yeah.
Because his exist, and, and, and a driveway needs to be ten feet off the property line. He's asking to go five feet off, which pushes him further away from, uh, from the intersection. So those are the two points that you should consider when, uh, looking at this tonight.
The public hearing is open, does anybody have any public comment on the variance request? And before we start, I would make a motion that the public hearing tonight be limited only to the driveway.
I second the motion, Georgia Woodbury.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, Dan McGuire, Seventy Johnson Road in Gray. I have traveled this road for as long as I've lived in this town. I go by it every single time I come out for my property. For decades, we lived with an intersection that was, um, below standard as far as the state was concerned, that caused, generated a lot of accidents. And finally, after all those years, we got the state to come and fix the intersection, and put a traffic light in, and now the intersection works pretty well. I don't know if Mr. Brady owned the property when, um, the state came through and built the intersection, but they took, um, that property either by eminent domain or with an agreement of the owner. That lot's not buildable. It doesn't meet any of the criteria for a driveway, or for the setbacks. It shouldn't be built on. It's a hardship, absolutely. But it's not the town's responsibility to, to make everything right for people that get themselves into a pickle. I know that probably sounds fairly harsh, but you also have to think about the thousands of cars that go through that intersection every day, and all the other people. And you haven't, we haven't talked at all about the fact that the beach is there, and that the amount of pedestrians that walk up and down from the beach, and the kids that ride their bike along there, that it's really not even a great intersection for any of that. Having another curb cut there, um, isn't gonna improve the intersection. isn't going to improve the intersection, even if it is just for a single-family house. And there isn't any place where you can put a driveway. Uh, you know, I don't know if, the state owns twenty-six, the state also owns North Raymond Road now, up to the, up to Egypt Road. So I don't know if a driveway permit would have to be had from the state. It is on other state roads. So I don't even know if the state would approve a driveway permit for this one. Thank you.
I th- I think, Dan, that we have, uh, after reading this, I think we have something from the state that says they don't own that side of the road.
Okay.
So the, the demarcation point is on, unfortunately, for the urban-
Urban compact.
Compact, on the other side of the road.
Okay, thank you.
You got me, but I, I hear you. Does anybody have any other questions?
Shane, when did you purchase the property?
I purchased it back in April of twenty twenty-three. So I've owned it just over half a year.
What are the, what were the specific details of the property?
All I got when I purchased it was that DOT denied a driveway entrance.
On what road? On North Raymond Road or twenty-six?
I assumed that it was on Route twenty-six, which is understandable, because it's busier and it-
Right.
But from my under, when I bought it not knowing, I thought I could apply to the town to get an entrance off North Raymond Road. Because of North Raymond Road, I didn't think was a state road. And then after I came in and applied for an entrance, it was denied for the side distance case. And that's when I contacted the state, and they said it's in the urban compact, so you have to go through the town for those.
I mean, in a perfect situation, if you did have a driveway by that storm drain, if you were able to work with an engineer about a little bump or, or something-
Yeah, maybe they have a bump up or a swale, so it drains it back onto the property instead of in the road.
Uh, like, from this picture, it doesn't look like you're too close to that island coming out?
Uh, well, I guess, and one of these other pictures that shows the island. Uh, they're still probably thirty or forty feet to the island.
To me, it doesn't seem unrealistic to have a driveway there. It is a small lot. Eminent domain probably came into play and cut the lot in half. It's a unique situation here.
Yeah, and you could put a house there, uh, and meet all the setbacks, but it'd be like a weird-looking-
Yeah, setbacks.
I mean, I hate to see anybody hurt. However, you bought a piece of property where restrictions were already in place in terms of setbacks. So you knew you, you go into this, hopefully you should have known, you needed a front setback, a side setback, a rear setback. You needed to get a curb cut done that wasn't done, so there's, you know, there were four things that you were truly spinning or rolling the dice on.
Right. If he was wanting to put a store on this property, would it be?
No.
Would it be a completely different situation?
Well, it would be no parking for a store.
Right.
Yeah.
There'd be signs all around the property saying no parking, just like the Dry Mills store.
He couldn't accommodate parking probably anyway, by the number of spaces needed for a commercial operation.
Yeah. Every single-family house in that little tiny lot, you're only going to get one car driveway.
Those were the rocks that were put there to keep people from driving through?
Uh, they've been moved.
Oh, they have?
They were behind the old store, because the old store sat in the intersection that, somewhere in that intersection.
Right.
And then the rocks were in the backyard, because people were coming across the lawn, so that they didn't have to wait in traffic at the lights. And there was also another building over where the rocks are.
Historically speaking, there used to be a black shop behind Dry Mills Store. It had a driveway, a small driveway. It was a black shop, small barn, and a small house that accompanied and buttoned up to the store with a very small driveway. That was torn down, and there was no parking established along there by DOT because of traffic. And all along the Route twenty-six property line, DOT came in, they put no parking signs down, eliminating a lot of customer parking for Dry Mills Store because of the traffic on Route twenty-six. And then the decision was made by, there's a lot of traffic there, and then summertime, it gets even worse.
Small businesses have pretty tough-
Coming down Dry, coming down Dry Mills Road, uh, not Dry Mills, it's North Raymond Road. And it was necessary by all the studies to widen Route, uh, Dry, North Raymond Road because of all the traffic that was going up and down Dry Mills Road, and the town was just putting a sidewalk in there with the state for years, and they can't do it for the extreme cost, and so there's, I mean, all the pine trees along in front of, of, of the church would have to be ripped up and ripped out, and it's a very, very difficult spot here, not only for an entrance, but for traffic. And I'm just thinking that come out of a driveway, potentially with a car turning around on a blind corner with a green light, creates more of a hazard. Especially if traffic all of a sudden stops to go into Dry Mills, I mean, the, uh, Irving's, I'm taking of all the terrible scenarios here that I can envision, or a person coming out of a driveway and not stopping because they think it's clear, when in fact, there's a car coming around a corner that you can't see.
I actually think that the traffic light would help, um, enter an accident.
It would, I live, I live on Route twenty-six, and the traffic light in Hanford Brothers does not help me at all. Especially on the traffic backed up almost all the way to Dry Mills Store.
Yeah, yeah, the other side that goes all the way to the parent party.
People backed up at Waymouth Road, or the Dry Mills, North Raymond Road, up beyond Waymouth Road, another quarter of a mile, half a mile, and then when they start to flow, there's a lot of traffic that goes one way or the other. Any other comments? Mr. McGuire?
If you look at your packet, page thirty, thirty-three, pardon me.
Do we have thirty-three pages in this packet?
I don't think so.
What's it look like, Dan?
Uh, it looks like this.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. You can, you can see, yeah, that's right, thank you. You can, and believe me, I don't, I, I'm, I, I feel for you, I really do, but I, I don't think making a mistake on top of a mistake is, is a solution. If you look at the lot, you can see where the old garage was. You can see why MDOT closed that lot. If you look at where it says north on this map, the side of the property line that's furthest up North Raymond Road, and you look at the turning lanes going south on North Raymond Road. If you pull out of this and you wanted to continue down to Hanford, you've got to cross fifty lanes, uh, fifty feet of pavement, and three lanes of traffic to get in, or two lanes of traffic to get into the lane that you want. Now, I travel this every single day, and that left turning lane for people who want to head up towards New Gloucester on twenty-six, that's full of cars. So now, how do you get out of that driveway if you want to go to Hanford? You've either got to wait for the traffic to lighten up, or what you do, what everybody else does, you pull out and you block the street, and you try and get somebody to let you in, which happens all the time in the Hanford area for this, for the same exact reason. It's, it's not that. The other piece of it is that if you're even, to be honest with you, entertaining any kind of a variance, I think you owe it to yourselves to, to work with skilled drawings and the professional help of an engineer. Because anything that happens with this lot's going to be compromised. And oh, by the way, as far as strangely shaped houses, I bought a, I bought a lot for my cottage. My house is triangular shaped. It's triangular shaped because I had to comply with all the setbacks for that particular lot. So, yeah, sometimes you have to do unusual things for the circumstances you get yourself into, but that doesn't mean that there aren't solutions.
Yeah, we're trying to get him to a point where he can start making, he can, can come back with some information, right? So that we can, it's just, we're, we're hinging on this one thing.
But there may not be any solution, that's what I'm telling you. That's an option, too. It should be an option that's considered.
Seems like you're a little biased.
Yeah, this, the main, mainly obviously put a lot of thought into this intersection.
You mean, so you had to build your house triangular, you had to do all this, it's like, you're being biased.
We're not, we're not going to argue between the public and the ZBA. Thank you, Mr. McGuire, and let's limit our conversations to-
You're sharing my experience.
Oh, yeah. I look at it as bias. I'm concerned.
I'm concerned of the biasness of-
He's a member of the public, he's not a-
We need to give Shane an opportunity to go find out what options. There's a new owner of the neighbor.
Mr. McGuire, let's, first of all, first of all- Mr. McGuire is not a member of the ZBA. He has no role in the decision-making process, other than offering his opinion, which he's done.
I'm a volunteer here for the ZBA, and it's, it's my time in, in, you know, dragging something on, or just trying to hinge off of the driveway.
I hear everything you say.
Let the guy start getting, talking to-
I mean, if this is how the town selects them and acts, that's fine.
There's a hate, there's hate, hate.
They can vote it out.
This is enough, and that's totally unacceptable by threatening a member of the public. Unacceptable. I move this discussion to be tabled until the meeting of January, whatever it is.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it's like the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
If somebody could look that up for me, just because I know I'm expecting to be out of town.
I mo- I move that this, uh, public hearing be, uh, tabled. And this request for variance to be tabled until January twenty-fourth.
Shane, Shane, do you think you can contact the new neighbor and have a conversation like we saw with the text message?
Yeah.
Okay.
I should be available the twenty-fifth, it's the-
Twenty-fourth?
The, that Wednesday, because it's the Thursday and Friday that I will be gone. So I should be available to be here for that one, for that meeting.
Shane, if it was an option, that new owner of that White House and White Barn?
If they're selling an easement, I'd be more than happy to buy it.
Well, if, in a perfect situation, if he was allowing you to use his driveway and then to park, like, I've, I have a house off of Center Road.
Okay.
The town wouldn't let me have my own curb cut?
Right.
I had to share with somebody.
Right.
So if that was a situation, would, would you not approve of that?
That would work.
Okay.
Um, just as long as I can access the land in any way, shape, or form. Um, when I bought it, knowing that it used to be the Dry Mills Store, I assumed that it was an existing building, so I'd be able to put another building on it.
It'd be interesting to see what your, that new neighbor says, and what is-
When, when you bought it, there was an existing building there?
Uh, no, um, in the past, I had one, so that's, and I know that-
But I mean, even looking at the map you buy, I hate to say this, but, I mean, there's what, eighty feet between where this curb used to be and, and your current curb?
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, they took quite a lot of it.
Yeah.
I didn't have.
And if you've been working with Tim, he may be able to help you as far as-
Right, yeah, and that's why-
Once you talk to your ne- new neighbors.
Yeah, and then, um, like I said, I'm just going through the process, because I know there's still the option to go to the Dubois, I can't pronounce it, uh, courthouse and petition them to get an entrance. So-
If you were denied here, that would be your next step.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so-
We're just tabling it for more information.
But we're tabling it, I think we need to, I want to calm things down. I want you to be able to take a look at all the things that have been mentioned tonight.
Yeah, would you guys want any more information besides talking to the neighbor? Would you want me to have Wayne survey it?
Well, I think Wayne needs to survey, I think, I mean, because the rest of it, I mean, you're asking for huge, huge-
Right.
Setback reductions.
Yeah, as far as the driveway goes, I think that there's specific information that you want him to obtain. If you could give that, if you could give him those bulleted items I had suggested initially, if there was any thing that he could provide from a traffic engineer, showing why it would support this, uh, because it is a fairly extreme location, and, you know, the, the, the tangent points are quite a ways away. So I don't know if that's something that, I'm just putting that out there, I don't know if that's something that the board's interested in seeing, or what you'd want to have for documentation from him.
Well, it looks like there's a tangent point right at his property line.
Right.
Off you go.
Basically, it's beyond, it's, his entire property is the tangent. It's the radius, it's the whole thing's curved. So it'd be fifty feet probably off either both of his, each hinge point of his property, or even beyond that, where that you would start.
So even the neighbor's entrances don't meet the current set requirements?
It's, it's there, though.
Yeah.
The neighbor is there. It's a long-established driveway and structure.
There's something you could work out with him, and with Tim, and, and get started that way. So the next month, we get something to look at and say, okay.
Okay. Um, and then are you guys still okay with splitting it? Does, uh, table the entrance till next month?
Everything is tabled.
Yeah, and then, um-
But next month will be the driveway.
Okay, and then the month after that, if it does go forward?
Well, it depends on how the driveway goes, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Talk to the neighbor, see what his thoughts are. He might have ideas that we haven't thought of, that you haven't thought of. If he can let you use that driveway?
Yeah, so just to be clear, so the applicant, next month, we've tabled everything, the applicant will come out with supporting documentation for the driveway only. And then we'll, we'll see where we go from there, and then it would be the following month that you would be expected to come back with a survey and your setback request and an actual building envelope and, and designs.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Making progress.
Do we need to-
Thank you, guys.
Move or vote?
All those in favor of tabling? We are tabled until January twenty-fourth. Is there any other new business before the board?
Not that I am aware of.
I would, uh, say in addition that Georgia and I are going to, uh, take a course from the University of Michigan specifically into Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a hundred and twenty-five bucks, I got, it's quite a bit of money out of my pocket right now. But if we get three or more people in the-
It's not the electric bill.
Huh? If we get, if we get three more people, they reduce the cost. So I would, uh, maybe seek out from our liaison if the town would be willing to reimburse zoning board of appeals members to take a zoning board of appeals course through the University of Michigan. I will provide you with more exact details.
Um, I would also like to add that there may be, I would have to look at your budget. There may be a training line actually in your budget for the board of appeals.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
I don't remember if there is. Um, if, if the town is supportive of that, there's also money in my budget for training, and since I'm your staff liaison, I think that if we could take it, I would be willing to take it out of those funds as well. And if it's an online course, I might be interested in doing the class with you, if you can give me the information. So I think that we could, we could work that piece of it out.
Yeah, I would be interested.
I'll pass that on.
Okay.
I'll pass, I'll pass on the, the link to all of us.
Yeah, because that link took you right into it, it was good.
Is there any other business before the zoning board of appeals tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? We are adjourned.